Okay. All right, so we will call the Monday, May 2 regular meeting of our Planning Commission at 7:00 to 7:00 P.M. I will note that all planning commissioners are in attendance. All planning commissioners here are present here in person except Adam Crum, who is attending via Zoom. Thank you, Adam, for being able to join us. And also with us are Chloe Moore in person, and I believe I saw Kevin Walsh, the zoning officer. And I see one member, is it one member or two members? One member of the public, it looks like. So with that, we'll begin. Does everyone have a copy of tonight's agenda? Do you need a copy of tonight's agenda?
If you have an extra, I'll take it.
Kevin, are you here because of the zoning matters we have on the agenda tonight?
No, I'm just here offering any advice or input that I can. I know usually I'm just, it's up to you guys. I don't need to be here.
Well, Kevin, we are going to discuss a few technical amendments to the zoning code that staff and I put together a list, and I realize that we have a worksheet on them, and I will email. Are you able to read your email right now?
Yeah.
Okay, I will email it to you so that you can see it.
Can you email it to me, too?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, for Chair's update, I do not have any major updates to give because everything else to discuss will be discussed on the agenda. So we'll skip over that, and we will proceed to a review of April minutes, which I circulated. Thank you, Adam, for putting the minutes together. I circulated them with all the other materials, I think, late last night. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments about the minutes or corrections to offer? I would like to ask one question, Adam, if you can hear me, which has to do with Page 2, zoning amendments. The next-to-last bullet says MPC agrees with the Montgomery County Planning Commission staff. Is the context of that us saying that we agree with MCPCs, the recommendations in their review letter for further consideration by council, of certain things like, well, I forget what they were, but they did, for example, limiting the distance of uses from schools and churches and things like that. Is that what that's referring to, those?
Yeah, that's a, that's a error that must have sent us this, it looks like.
Okay, can I, can we just clarify that then in the final minutes? Would that be all right? I mean, I'll do that, but is that okay with you if it's in the spirit of the conversation?
Yes, I agree. That was what was said.
I only flag it because it's important to our recommendation later. That's the only comment slash question I have. If there are no other comments or questions, I ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented, and then with that one amendment, motion.
Move Dave.
Moves, is there a second?
Second.
Jim, and all in favor of approving the minutes as presented with that one amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, pass this unanimously with our thanks to Adam for once again pulling together, making sense of these long and discursive meetings. Thank you. Okay, so the next item is SADO revisions and special meeting. We are at the phase of the revision of the SADO process at which Chloe and the staff have presented us with a largely complete set of revisions. The staff will be meeting again, I believe, on the end of this week, on May 9.
On Monday.
Next Monday to work on them further. I think they've been circulated to you all a few times, but the hope is that in June we can discuss the whole package of SADO revisions and make a recommendation. My suggestion was, Chloe and the staff team, that we have very hard times getting to this in our regular meetings. We have many other things to do, so it might be best to have one meeting dedicated to that topic, which would mean a meeting in addition to our regular business meeting in June. So we've been trying to find a date, and what I wanted to do was see if we could get closure, at least on some options, for a second meeting date in June. Try to see here. So one option that we kind of landed on was June 1 at 7:30 P.M. instead of 7:00, except that my understanding is that Dave and Jim Spear did not attend. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't know if it was. Jumped late, maybe, but.
We did a doodle.
Right, that's how it turned out. Did you, did you answer that?
Yeah, I guess I did.
Okay.
I'm not sure why, I can't make it, but if I said I did, I guess I can.
Okay.
What day in the week is it?
By June 1 is.
Wednesday, the first Wednesday in June.
First Wednesday. I'd late comes before our regular meeting.
Yeah.
I wanted to present the second option, which is that we have a special meeting after our regular meeting later in the month, and I wanted to ask your availability for that. The reason is, I spoke with the solicitor today about some of the development applications in the pipeline, and there might be some applications that we will need to look at next month. And because I am going to be away personally for about three weeks in May, starting next week, I won't really have time to do the work that's necessary to prepare, and so we're looking to see if we can have the applicants come later in the month. So that would be scenario there would be, we could meet at our regular meeting date and discuss the SADO, and then have a special meeting date later in the month to talk about one or two development applications. And so I wanted to ask you all, one, if you felt that was a reasonable alternative, and two, if you could suggest dates later in the month, it would be nice for all of us who want to be in a meeting to be there. So I know Dave and Jim have looked very closely at the SADO and would be disappointed if you didn't have the chance. Of course, you're probably thinking like, yeah.
I'd miss you.
So how does that idea strike you? Meeting after our meeting, like a week or two after our regular meeting, another date?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
It might give us more time to prepare. As you know, one of them might be Montgomery Avenue, which is a very complicated project.
Do we know what properties are coming up in here?
The only one I can reference is Montgomery Avenue right now. So can anyone tell me any dates they would not be available, like the second or third week of June? Can we just like write it down on a piece of paper and slide it over so we can, before we leave tonight, we can do that? We might have to spend time talking about it now, but it's.
Did Doodle Pool didn't help you with all that?
Not, not really. It only did a few dates. So let's, let's try and, if you could jot the dates down on a piece of paper and pass it over, we can, at the end of the meeting, we can look and see when, when we may propose a second meeting. Chloe, is there anything else you'd like to call to our attention about the SADO revision before we move on?
I wanted to mention one thing, which is that there was a bunch of discussion about, actually, can I just share my screen for one second about?
Michelle, can you allow Chloe to share her screen?
Probably I am allowed.
Oh, you should be able to, yeah.
I can. Well, it's not in, it's not showing. This, this table about what are we doing about sidewalk minimum width and planting strip work? And the last time we talked about it, there was a request for some, some kind of images, cross-sections, other things, and I do have some things to show you. It's just, it's like rectangles on an aerial. This might be something that requires a little discussion and then some changes, and then we come back to it. So this is something, if you talk about it now, tonight, if there's 20 minutes for it, probably, I would guess, or, I don't know, depending on the order of the meetings in June and what happens, but, or we can just save it for the whole SADO meeting, that's fine. But I just mentioned this, we, we talked about this before, but.
Right.
There's some follow-up here.
So you have, you have some graphics to show us.
I have some graphics I could show you tonight if it worked with your agenda, and if it doesn't, I understand.
Okay, well, let's see if we can get through the items, Station Circle and the zoning things we need to talk about, and if we have time to end, then we can certainly come back to it.
And then just very briefly, we have Montgomery County Planning Commission is hosting an online event in which, on May 24 at 4 o'clock, in which we're going to talk about three different planning topics briefly, infill development, electric vehicles, and testing your zoning in SADO. It's going to be like, it's called Hot Topics. So I'll put a link in the chat of the Zoom meeting, but if you can, you can also search Montgomery County PA Planning Smarter and you'll find it. It's free on the internet, May 24 at 4:00 P.M. You might enjoy it.
Are these open to the general public?
They are, yes. Anyone is welcome.
Would you mind passing that information on to the staff?
Yeah.
So they could alert the public, since there are, there may be people in our community who.
Yes.
Would have interest in that.
Yes.
Some of our more diligent correspondents may be interested in testing your SADO.
I guess I would name so. Electric vehicles is always a popular topic.
Yeah.
So your presence may happen to contribute to the conversation.
Yeah, well, certainly the EAC, I wonder if they've been trying to figure some things out about that. Okay, is there anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Chloe. So hopefully we'll get back to you tonight. Okay, so any other announcements or updates? Okay, let's move on to Town Square, Station Circle. I'm going to ask Jim and Dave to lead us through this. The first topic would be just an update on planning for Wednesday's charrette. Thank you, Heidi. This is what a calendar looks like that tells me of your availability, in case anyone is struggling to figure out how to put that together.
Let me just pass that one around. Maybe it's excellent.
I like that.
I don't understand why you went on a piece of paper and let's have all of them.
Then we're going to have to talk about it for 20 minutes. Who's X's are these? So is yours? Okay, Jim. Okay, so Jim and Dave, number one is just an update on the charrette, which is on Wednesday, and then B, I'm going to ask you to lead a conversation about the consultant proposals we, we received. Our charge is to provide a recommendation on those proposals to council. The proposal, the, the, the recommendation could be simply our recommendations on each proposal, or it could be our recommendation to say this is the best proposal, or these two are acceptable, this one's not, any way that you choose to do it. And I would like to note, I'm going to, I can participate in the discussion, but I'm going to recuse myself from the recommendation because I have discussed collaborating with one of the firms on a business project, and therefore it's better for me not to vote on any type of recommendation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dave and Jim.
Well, start, we're, we're in the process here at the 11th hour of getting our logistics in line, nuts and bolts, for the hands-on charrette on Wednesday evening. We have, we have lined up Dennis Montagna to give his, to give his presentation, which I believe is ready to go, or will be by sometime late on Tuesday. Heidi assures me that he's on target. So generated a, an order of activities for the, for that evening, which involves Jim again as the master of ceremonies, starting the thing off, and leads through a couple of, through Dennis to, and through me, I think, to the main event of the evening, which is, actually Dennis is probably the main event of the evening. The main event of the evening, which is the actual collaborative charrette activity. Dave and I have been assembling the, the nuts and bolts for that, namely pens and paper and that, that very large image map of the town square with the, with the existing circular parking lot eradicated from it, so it's a blank area. And we are going to give a, or Dave is going to give a set of instructions to the, to the room full of people eagerly clutching their fat pens and surging toward the decision point of what they're going to write on the paper. And we're all set to do that. I think everything, if Amazon brings me rolls of 24-inch wide tracing paper on time tomorrow, the way they are so famous for doing, we will be all set for that. So that part is, that part is ready to roll. It's as we have discussed it in the past, the goal is not to come up with a prize-winning design, but to come up with the individual and collective feelings about what is appropriate to be in that space. So we'll have as many as 10 tables, I think, if the goal being five or six people at a table. We've discussed how many facilitators, one per table, we can muster, and I think we're at eight at the moment, so that would be eight tables. And we're all going to be pressed into service to help with that, help with that aspect of it. We're going to convene at 6:00, so there's a little prep time for the 7:00 started gun is fired, so everyone will have a chance to eat a little pizza and get on the same page as far as what the procedure should be, and Dave will lead that because he's the, he's the guru of charrettes. He's done so many of them. Todd, he's done a lot of them, too, and he's, the sister man. So that's the, that's, those are the plans for the, for the, for the charrette itself. At the, at the end of, I shouldn't add that at the end, there is a, an opportunity for a representative of each table to stand up and summarize the recommendations of that, of that table. We'll see how that goes. Would it be nice if there were a way to, to project an image on a wall, but I don't think we have the technology to do that, lacking an overhead projector, which is somewhere in the landfill in Western Pennsylvania somewhere, but that would have been the way to do that. Any ideas about how to do that? You know, presumably there's a scribbled-on, large piece of paper that is the, that is the graphic result of, of the work that a group of six or seven people would, would produce, but I'm not sure how to get that up on, up on the wall or on the screen, like in that old-fashioned.
People just might set it up, you know, like you're in a gallery and just walk from one to the next to the next and discuss.
We could, we could potentially just tape it to the wall.
Yeah.
Hard to see, though. I'm fearing it's hard, hard to see. We could do that. We could just tape it to the wall, but that may be the only practical, practical solution. Every time I use technology, and I'm trying not to look at the owl, eye to eye, but I am not, less and less impressed, so. So that's, that's a story for Wednesday's event. And the ensuing activity of the committee and the planning commission will be to, to summarize all of that information for the, for the third meeting. We'll, we'll get to how to do that at a later date. Comments?
Looking for requirements, you know, minimum parking, minimum, maximum, coverage, blah, 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 anything like that to sort of guide decision-making?
Nope. We're looking for people to express their opinions with no guiding framework from us at all. I should add that there, that there is a, I think I sent around a bullet list of all the comments that we got in meeting number one. Did everybody get that? Would have been a couple of days after meeting number one. Did everybody see that document? Okay, so we're going to have a, slightly edited version of that, which lists the number of, number of times a given item was mentioned. So for example, green space in the square was mentioned eight times and was the leading, the most popular comment, but there, there are something like 50 comments. Some of them, you know, some of them pie in the sky and some of them not. So I'm going to, we're going to have that available for, as a handout, distribute to people as they come in the door. At least that's my proposal. Does that work for you, Todd? It'd be that handy. So I will stack those things at the front table. So that's that.
Are you going to be in charge of getting copies, maybe?
Yes. I'll just run it off on my computer. So we have also been, I think everybody's been looking at the proposals from the three landscape architecture firms. Has anybody drawn a conclusion?
Well, I'm, I'm, let me, well, let me, let me start with a little explanation here. First of all, as a background, although I've been in many of these discussions of looking at professional proposals, I don't think I've ever done it in a public meeting where it wasn't a fairly confidential conversation. I understand from Todd that our solicitor assured us that it has to be, given who we are in here, but I, I find it a little odd, and I just would mention it in starting, that again, in my experience, these conversations are often fairly confidential. Since this is not, I would recommend that you use your words wisely. The, the sheets that I handed out is my summary of the three proposals that we received from Simone Collins, Dirk Anetson, and Herbert Rowland and Grubik. The, the first two columns in each of them, the fee and the scope of work, I tried to be as verbatim with the proposals as I could be, such as in describing the various staff positions and how they were described in the proposals. I didn't try to editorialize on any of the terminology. Same thing under the scope of work, I tried to be as verbatim as space would allow in doing that. The remarks are, and the questions are mine, my, my personal remarks and questions. They don't have any, any input from anybody else. They weren't meant to be exhaustive or that they, or that there was no room for additions or, or disagreement about them, but I put them down, hopefully as a way to help guide the discussion and maybe even save a little time. I, I found that two of the proposals were, I would say, comparable in terms of scope and understanding. I thought the Simone Collins and the Dirk Anetson, the fees are slightly different, as you'll see here, but I thought that they were basically comparable proposals in terms of, of comparable experience and competence. Both, to me, were, were well-written, organized, incomplete, and demonstrated the, the relevant experience that was needed, although, as I've said here, there are several questions I have for each of them. The Herbert Rowland and Grubik proposal was, I found markedly different, much longer, much, with a much, much larger staff assigned to the, to the team, and fees that were substantially more than the other two firms. And in my written piece, you can see in the remarks and the questions, I had more questions and more remarks that reflected that. So I think before I throw in my two cents about where we should go from this, I think we should open it up and have the discussion started. Or maybe not.
Well, I'll tip in my two cents, but it's very, I very much, I'm very much in the same school of thought that Dave is. Herbert Rowland and Grubik wrote a proposal that, that seeks to overwhelm the recipient with the size and experience of the firm. The very first image that crops up when you open their proposal, first impression is being important in a proposal, very important. The first image that one sees when they open the proposal is a huge room full of, in excess of 100 professional people in a, in a sort of atrium setting, and you're meant to think, my goodness, that's a lot of people who are going to work on my project. But of course, that's not the case. The reality is, is going to be handful of those people are going to work on your project, but I found that presentation itself to be off-putting, I have to say, whereas the rest of the proposal does not, does not back up the personal touch that, you know, one would expect a proposal for services for a project like this to, to deliver. It's, it's very, it's, it's, it conveys a very large organization, may or may not have too much interest in, in the niceties of your, of your problem. And I didn't like that. The fee was also very high. The partners are making too much money. I was a partner myself, so I know what, I know what's involved in, I know what's involved in running proposals. There is a, there is, I think, pretty universally in the design professions, a theory of proposal writing called the Mandeville method. I don't know if anybody's heard of that. It's nothing new, and what? It's nothing new, and what it, what it basically says, to strip it down to its essence, is that the most effective way to convey, to get selected by, by a client is to not tute your own horn as a professional, but to act interested in your potential, in your prospective client's problem, and to ask questions of your client rather than to, rather than to go on and on and on about your own capabilities. And I have always found that to be the case in many, many years of participating in proposal writing, presentations, and HRG's proposal fails to do that big time. So I was interested in that. Now, the other two, as Dave pointed out, I think they're very comparable firms. They both do the same, the same kind of medium-scale work, and that's what this is. It's not a personal, not a garden in somebody's backyard. It's a, it's a civic space, so it's, it's a project of medium scale, and they're both skilled at doing that. Urban, urban, small urban scale projects. I would do. It strikes me, and I'll shut up after I say this, it strikes me that Dirk and Edson's fee is too low to support the effort that we would expect to get, and have them make, I should say. Simone Collins' fee proposal is pretty much what I would expect.
Do either of these have experienced during the project like hours, maybe in the area, or?
Yeah.
They do?
They do.
Is it something that's worth going to look at?
Well, have you looked at the proposals?
I, not thoroughly.
Well, look at the graphics. I mean, look, they present, they present projects that they've done that they consider to be comparable, and again, the way they present themselves in terms of the, of the graphics that they, they bring to the show and tell effort, which is what this really is, speaks volumes for what they are offering. I think they both have, they both have done not the kind of project that we want to do.
Both experienced too in the funding aspects of this, of locating and obtaining funding. That's an area that I will freely admit I am almost totally ignorant in, and I for one would need guidance, and I felt comfortable that, that either from actual three firms would be able to provide that.
I'm just wondering, and pardon my ignorance, is this, this is the shortlist and there were more, or, okay, this is it?
Yeah, there were, there were six at the outset. By the time we got to the walkthrough on that rainy day, I forget what day of the month it was.
It was Thursday.
It was a Thursday, a rainy Thursday. By the time we got to that day, we were all standing under the canopy, we were down to four firms, I think, and the next day or so, one of them dropped out of the running, leaving us with three, and now we're looking at these three.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering, how, how was the RFP distributed or advertised?
It was advertised to a pre-selected list.
Okay.
Pre-qualified.
Okay.
And the determination was made, you know, within the group here, that all of the firms had the necessary qualifications.
Which, what were they?
I'm sorry?
What were the necessary qualifications?
Well, that they had the experience and the, and the wherewithal to do a project of this type, so.
I mean, it's not a very big project.
No.
It didn't have to be a big firm like HRG.
Right.
Okay. I mean, they had to bring in landscape architects to...
Right. Oh, yeah, that. Well, why don't you talk about that idea, so we're putting, that's an important consideration.
I think it's very important. I mean, I think the other two firms are landscape architecture firms, whereas HRG is an engineering firm, I guess. They engineer?
Yeah.
But they know that they're contracting it out.
To two landscape.
The Carter Bandai.
To two fir-, two landscape firms.
Yeah, two different.
Ground Reconsidered is also a landscape architecture firm. I think they seem to have no rendering, you know, presentation role in the, in the project, but, but, you know, the, the team, in addition to HRG, included not only Carter Bandai and the landscape architect, Ground Reconsidered, as I said, a landscape doing some presentation rendering work, but also Campbell, Thomas and Company architects. I'm not quite sure what they were, what their role would be. I didn't think there was much architecture in the project, but they were included in, in the team too.
Well, Bob Thomas is a very experienced trail and bike player.
Yeah.
So I think probably we're meant to see that they are paying attention to pedestrians, trails, bikes, those types of things.
Okay. And as you can see in my hourly rate list for HRG, they also had, and these were only the, the, as near as I can make out of their matrix, it was very confusing, but as near as I can make out, all of the, all of the positions under HRG were billable time on this project in addition to the, to the other firms. So it was a very, very large team of relatively highly priced staff and partners working on the project. I think the, the number that really struck to me, struck home to me was each, each of the three firms provided the number of estimated hours for the phase one with the fee, and when you divide the fee by the number of hours, you get an average dollar per hour for, for the team working on it. In HRG's was $185 an hour. Dirk and Edson was $128, and Simone Collins was $110. I thought that was a very, a very instructive way to compare the, the proposals, at least in terms of fee.
I also saw HRG had submitted a proposal for the Sabine School property, and it had a very similar group of people involved in it.
Yeah, I have no knowledge of that.
Which I thought was, it was interesting. I mean, personally, I appreciate, very much appreciate your comments. I, I am leaning more towards the smaller landscape architecture, sole landscape architecture firms. I'm also leaning more towards Simon Collins. I felt that their work seemed to be a little looser, a little less sort of corporate hardscape. I saw the Culinary Institute project that they did, and it was very much a corporate hardscape, and I feel like a softer touch of Simone Collins.
You mean Dirk and Edson, you said?
Yeah, Dirk and Edson. I prefer the Simone Collins presentation that we see here. I don't know if that's representative of me. Personally, I think it's great to see some of the work in person and see how it actually has worn over time and detailing and, you know, how are the plants doing, that kind of thing. I mean, there's so much involved in a landscape architecture design project because not only do you have to lay it out for how it is now, but you have to display how the plants are gonna look as they mature over time. So that's my two cents vote for Simone Collins.
I have a question for you, Jim. You probably looked at more carefully than I did these more carefully than I did. Did any of these proposals reveal to you some insight into our scope of work, that the, that the proposer actually added, you know, added insight, something we didn't think about? Or did any of them point out something about our scope of work that was problematic? Kind of, I'm kind of curious how responsive they were to the specific scope of work, and if they brought anything more to it than, than we put on the table?
I would say no.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I mean, they all said kind of the right things in terms of their, their excitement about the project and, you know, and what it could be, but I didn't, I don't think there were any kind of mind-shattering revelations that came from reading that, nor whatever I really expected there to be.
Here in mind that by doing our, our series of three meetings with the public, we are, we are taking a big bite out of what a design firm would normally do and get paid to do as pre-schematic work, developing a program, is what we're doing ahead of time, and we haven't done it yet. We're in the midst of doing it. So if, if, if I were a landscape architect and I was proposing on an arbor and town square, I would wanna meet with the public and do the, and do all the fact-finding and, you know, sniffing around for, for the, the heartfelt desires and all that kind of stuff that we are, as a group, doing on their behalf. So they didn't have benefit of that kind of information going into writing this proposal. They had to sort of take our word for it, that we were gonna, that we were gonna come up with a program for them to base their work on. And I can imagine that that is, that's not the normal way that a, that a proposal for, for schematic design is done. So it's a bit of a crapshoot on the part of proposer under those conditions. We maybe should have brought them in earlier, but in any case, it is what it is. So that may explain however why there is more of a, why the proposals don't, don't attempt to be more sort of customized to our situation.
And finally...
We haven't communicated what our situation is.
I mean, typically...
Customized in what sense?
You thought...
I said, please, or let me try this a different way. It may be that the proposals that we got from these guys are, do not reflect a customized view of the program because we haven't given them.
And we didn't, and we didn't ask for that in the, in the response to the, to the RFP.
Which may have been a mistake, but...
No, no, I don't think it is. I think it's, it's not, firstly, I don't think it's right to ask for design services in the writing of proposals. We were asked for that many times over my career, you know, but that's, that kind of gets off the subject.
Let me cut to the, something I noticed, one thing I noticed. So one proposal, Simone Collins, talked about the importance of developing probable costs, construction costs, according to methodologies and using approaches that would be necessary for the specifically said federal funding sources. I didn't, because of the one firm that was so widely, you know, over cost, I didn't look at that. But I noticed Dirk and Edson didn't mention that, right? They just said they would provide, they would provide cost estimates necessary for grant applications. So, well, on the other hand, one of the deliverables Dirk and Edson talked about was a stormwater best management practices plan, whereas Simone Collins didn't mention that. So I'm just, that's why I asked the question, because I did see differences in the proposals. And I suppose if you called up Dirk and Edson, they'd say, well, of course, you know, we will look at things in terms of, if you call up Simone Collins, they'd say, well, of course, we would provide you with a stormwater. But I noticed, there are some differences that I noticed, and that's, that's why I asked my question.
Yeah.
I would like to respond to that. I'm looking at the experience summaries on Simone Collins, and their civil engineer has extensive experience with stormwater infrastructure projects.
Oh, I don't doubt that.
Well, I would say that...
Some that's listed in there at least.
Any of these firms...
She's the second, in second list.
You know, any of these firms have the experience to do this project. I am completely confident in that, and, you know, you can get into kind of dangerous areas in picking apart proposals and saying, well, this firm said the magic words here, but the other firm didn't, therefore, you know, they're out. When, I know, in my own experience, we, we would sometimes not get projects because we didn't say the magic words, and, and I don't know if you had asked us, we would have told you, yeah? So, yeah, you could, you could pick them, you could pick them apart a little too, too minutely. I, you know, I think to me, the background noise in this is that, and I would say all three firms could do this project. I mean, it's not, it's not the toughest project in the world or the biggest project in the world. Any of these firms are qualified to do it, and they had the, the resumes and the relevant project experience to demonstrate that. And I, and I am absolutely confident that all three would, would look at the stormwater management.
Yeah.
I'm not really too concerned about that. I mean, Simone Collins, I don't, I still see, I, I mentioned it in, in my, in my questions, but they, they said, they, they, they did have a line about going, if I remember correctly, something to the effect that if they went after the federal funding, the cost would be higher, the construction costs. And I didn't quite understand that. I didn't know what that meant, whether it was because, you know, you were, had to go by prevailing wages, you know, for construction, or that there were additional costs imposed on that process, you know, higher levels of contingent. I don't know what it meant, but that was a question that I wanted to ask them, because I was curious about that.
One thing that we could recommend to counsel is that we take the two preferred firms and interview them, and, and questions like the one that Dave just mentioned would get flushed out in a process like that. Doesn't have to be a big deal, but, you know, 45 minutes or an hour with each of these folks would yield a, a much more touchy-feely kind of a result than reading here.
I mean, the way, the way, you know, we, we approached these kind of processes in my office was, when we were in a project where there was a, a short, a shortlist of firms going after it, our feeling always was that the determination, and this is very much the case here, that the determination was always made on the client's part, that all the firms were competent, so then it became a matter of which will, sometimes speed would, would trump everything else. More often than not, it had to do with the personal connection between the, the firm and the client that was shown in a meeting, you know, in an interview. And that was something that can't be conveyed, obviously, in a proposal, but that at the end of the day, if you feel like the firms are competent, then it's a matter of who you think the best personality matches, irregardless of the experience. And for that reason, I, I agree with Jim. I think a, you know, a one-hour session with those two firms, with Simone Collins and Dirk and Edson, would be well-advised. I would give, I would give them the questions that we had for each firm and ask them to prepare answers beforehand. Then, you know, in my, in my mind, what I would do is give them a half hour to talk, to say whatever they wanted to at the beginning, presumably answering the questions, and then have a discussion for a half hour. So each interview would be an hour long, and then a final decision could be made.
Whereas I would not give them the questions ahead of time.
Well, there you go.
But I think I would give them a half hour to present themselves, and then I would hit them with whatever questions and see how they reacted to them, because that's a much, that'll be a much truer... because that's a much, that'll be a much truer statement out there. You know, that'll make, that'll be closer to the truth.
Is that a decision that council wants to make, or were they hoping for, you know, were they hoping to be handed a recommendation from us?
I didn't receive a specific directive to align on, light upon one firm and give that recommendation to council. At least I said at the beginning, I think any level of recommendation, here's the one, we'd like to interview these two, these two are qualified, pick one yourself, would, would help. So what I'd like to ask is, is can someone sort of try to frame the consensus you see emerging in the conversation?
Can I just add one more sort of area of question? It's the same battle I've been arguing week, or month ago, which is basically, you know, it's the sustainability clause, and there really isn't anything written in here for consulting. I didn't look very far into any need certifications. You know, landscape architecture always has a sort of sustainable component inherently built into it. But for us, I think in terms of Narbor's comprehensive plan, it's more than that. And the goals at this point in 2022, looking at 2030, are pretty ambitious. And I think that this project is a great opportunity to put a lot of that forward and to get it into the scope and, you know, one of the, check the boxes of this, of this project is really to plant seed for exemplifying that we're not, we're not just setting goals, but we're achieving them. And, and I just wonder if within the scope of this RFP, if we have made that a priority.
Well, I think that would be an excellent question to ask the firms in the interview, you know, how they would respond to that. I mean, I have thoughts about that. You know, but I, I think that would be a really interesting question to ask them. I mean, yeah, obviously because of the nature of the project, there are elements of sustainability that don't come into building a building. But there are certainly other aspects of sustainability that I, I have to believe they, they deal with on a daily basis in their practices, and I'd like to hear what they have to say about it.
If we go with the pass to the council for them to interview, it's council asking the questions, right? It's not us.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I-
Undetermined.
I mean, the other aspect of this is, you know, at least at some level, we've represented that at the third meeting, you know, the charrette, the selected firm will, will be there to observe. You know, is that possible if the interview was, was within the planning commission to have those interviewers that make a recommendation? Could that happen by the third meeting? Yeah, I think it probably could. If it gets thrown to council, I don't imagine that, that that could occur that quickly.
So the third, third meeting is two weeks again from this Friday? I mean, this Wednesday?
Or, sorry. I had the idea it was further away than that.
Twenty-six, twenty-fifth?
Twenty-six.
Yeah, I think it's the twenty-fifth. Is that right?
It's like three weeks away.
Three weeks away. But still.
So the council meeting on the fifth and the nineteenth.
The council would want to decide on the nineteenth.
So you're saying they would accept our recommendation on the fifth and then line up interviews for the nineteenth?
I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how they would do it.
That's up to them. You know, we could recommend one tonight, if we could come to a consensus in this room. And then we could say, but a further recommendation is, in order to drill down a little bit and get a better feel for these proposers, there are two, I'm shaking the liberty of saying we're down to two now. There are two that we would like to know more about, and a way to know more about them in the interview.
I like that a lot, giving them the option to just either run with one choice or to improve further.
I'm certainly prepared to do that. And also, I should, I should mention on your full disclosure, at one time, my office did work with Simone Collins. I don't think we've done a project with, well, I'm not in the office anymore. But I don't think the office has worked with them probably for at least 10 or 15 years. But I, I, at one time, I did know them. I don't know who's there. And even though I know Simone and Collins are still there, I don't know about their staff.
Dave, I don't think that represents a conflict.
No, I don't, I don't think it's a conflict either. I just, I just don't want, if it comes out someday that I, that Brower and Hapman did work with Simone Collins, I don't want somebody to say, well, you never said that, so I'm saying it now.
Exhausted.
Well, wasn't it a good experience?
Yeah, but that's why they're on the list, because I, I think they're very good at landscape architects personally.
So how about that? How about if we see if there's a consensus and then also recommend that it might be, might be advantageous to interview the two, the two front runners?
Because there are some questions about how the approaches that we'd like to learn more about before making a final decision.
Yeah.
It's not because we're unsure about the consensus you're describing, it's that we're feeling, and because as Dave said, sometimes you can learn what it's like to work with someone just by interviewing.
Yep.
So that's fine?
Absolutely.
You can abstain from that process, but it's a good thing to do. Someone, I guess, should frame that as a resolution or something?
Well, before we, I mean, should we talk a bit about what our, should we go around the table and see it, say who we think?
Well, has everybody had a chance to look at the proposals enough? I don't know, Jimmy said you really had.
Haven't, but I'm not going to be really qualified to, you know. I was hoping there'd be another consensus that I could pitch on too.
I agree, I agree with interviewing both. I think that's wise. But, because, you know, it is hard to tell from a proposal. It's like you were saying, Dave, it's like you leave the one thing out that is one of your strengths, but you didn't know that was going to be looked at that terribly, or you just missed it or whatever.
I mean, to me, and I'll pick up on something that, that Jim mentioned. I, and I don't, I, I don't know why, and I, I'm not trying to, you know, analyze the numbers, but I do believe that Dirk and Edson's fee is too low. I, from my professional experience, that the amount of work we want to have done in this phase can't be done for under $20,000 in a, in a manner that I would want to have it done. So, you know, I, the, obviously, the first question that I would have is, why is your fee so low? But I, you know, I think that's the most problematic part of their, of their submission. And maybe the only problematic part of their submission was the fee was too low. And I, I, having lost projects in my own office because our fee was too low, I kind of know what goes into tossing out a low fee, but I, I can leave that for another day.
Yep.
Let's see if Adam has anything. I tried to send him a note. Adam, if you're tuned in, do you have anything you'd like to add to the conversation?
One hour.
Can you speak a little more loudly? We're having a little trouble with this.
The idea of a one hour interview is a sound idea.
There you have it.
We don't have to check out what you-
Do you agree with the, everyone else that those two firms should be interviewed? Are those the two firms that you, rose high, most high on your list?
Yes, I concur.
Anything else you would ask Adam?
You started to say something about one hour, but I didn't, we didn't get what it was.
It was just that you had suggested a one hour interview with the top ranked firms.
Yeah. Or so, one hour or so.
Approximately. I mean, you give a, you, you have a schedule so that both firms have an equal amount of time.
There you go.
I do think we should put together some questions to, to pass on to council to ask specific questions.
Yeah, I do have some concerns if council is going to do the interviewing, that, that they will, you know. Well, I'm, I'm also concerned that they're going to look at their proposals at the level of, of analysis that really needs to happen. I mean, those guys have a lot of stuff on their plate, as you well know. I, for one, am much more comfortable with the idea that the recommendation comes from, from us to council, that this is the firm that you should use.
I'm comfortable with that, yeah.
Well, we come from the world of design firms and, you know, have some street credits here.
The only challenge is if the planning commission does the interviews, we can't formally make a recommendation, because we're not going to convene before the nineteenth. Unless we convene to do that. Is that what you're proposing, that we convene at like a meeting?
No, it's a public meeting. It has to be advertised, you know what I mean? That's a problem.
All right, so here's what I'd suggest. Again, do not want to weigh in on the actual recommendation, but I think what I hear might work is for, if, if it's the sense of everyone else, that there's one firm that you think as of today is the best candidate, you should make a recommendation says this firm as of today is the best candidate. However, we think it would be in the borough's interest to conduct an interview of two firms before a decision is made. I'm not quite sure how the interview should be. Planning commission will have to be involved. Council wants to be involved. But we think it would be good to work out a way to have an interview before the decision is made. And then you guys can work that process out with Michelle and Samantha.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't think, I don't think it's a deal breaker if we have to announce for the third charrette that, that the negotiations for the firm have not been completed, therefore, they won't be at the third meeting. Yeah, it's going to be, I'm assuming it's going to be taped so they can certainly, whoever the eventual successful firm is, they could certainly watch what happened there. They don't have to literally be there.
I, I personally think it would be very valuable to have the firm participate.
Well, I think for a moment, but that might be part.
Well, we could also postpone the third meeting.
Let Adam go. What do you, what were you saying?
Sorry, the training. Of the three proposals, based on the remarks of everyone tonight, the, the top ranked firm is probably Simone Collins, because the body of work is comparable, it's, it's a good body of work, a lot of experience with this type of project, you know, an understanding of the issues with grant applications. And then the fee was scaled to the level of effort that was being requested. So, you know, if you were going to, if you were going to go based purely on the written proposals, that's probably the direction you would go in. It is valuable still to have an interview in the process, I think. But if the, the most important, I think it's more valuable also to have the firm at the actual public meeting. Thank you.
I agree.
Well, then I, then I suggest that the third meeting gets pushed off by a couple of weeks. You know, allow the process to work its way through.
Is there any downside to doing that?
You guys, you guys are, I'm-
I can't think of a downside.
Except it's just been advertised and people have been on their calendars and-
Yeah.
And they might have other things on other days.
I think Michelle might have some thoughts about it.
I'm, I'm all there about changing dates.
Okay.
Yeah, but if it's, if it's, at the expense of having this, the firm not actually participating in the town meeting, I think it's not a downside. I mean, I think that it's a downside to not have them participate. So I think we should continue to discuss.
What if we had a fourth, a fourth quote kickoff meeting for the project with a successful firm?
I think you're making it too complicated.
Listen?
Making it too complicated. Look at you. It seems like, aside from me, and I'm going to abstain, but it seems like everyone else is the first pick. So I think that is something that can be reported against.
Well, let's see if that's the case.
Okay, let's, let's isolate that question and see if that's true.
What's your first pick?
Oh, God.
Don't sit at the end of the table.
Going back to my first comment, my first comment was, is this a shortlist? Like, where's the, where's the close, you know, you know, neck and neck? Like, there isn't one. It's too low, it's too high, it's-
What's your first pick?
One with everybody else. I mean, okay, I can't say that. But, well, Simone Collins seems like the most reasonable and most flexible to the needs of the project.
I would also give Simone Collins the nine.
I'm only going to be able to go along with that. I'm not experienced in that area, are you? I'm sorry.
You don't need to, you don't need to vote, just say. Pass.
All right, I will pass.
And Adam, were you voicing your own thoughts or the, an observation, the consensus?
I mean, I, I, I agree with the majority opinion so far.
So based on what was submitted, which is admittedly limited, it feels like if a choice had to be made, the consensus would be to choose Simone Collins. However, since we're different people, there's a hope to learn more about these firms, what they like to work with, what their approach is to important issues like sustainability are, why their budgets are the way they are, and the borough would benefit for talking to these firms before making a decision. So that's, that's part two. And I, and I'm sensing the consensus is that those firms would be Simone Collins and Dirk. And that's, I don't hear anyone making a strong pitch to interview the third firm.
Well, I, I frankly, just being frank, I thought they were highly qualified, but the inflation was, was an immediate deterrent. So, you know, that was a deal breaker.
Yeah.
Okay, so that means you wouldn't, you wouldn't- So then the question is, what's the process of interviewing and arriving at a decision? I mean, I think, right? And I, and I, I would say, I would say probably, we could state the preference that planning commission members would like to be involved in those interviews. That'd be fine if council members were to be involved. I personally would say, if planning commissioners were involved, and I will not be involved in these interviews, because of the conflict of interest. But if planning commission members were involved, and we could not meet as a group to make recommendations, at the very least, you could just write a report and say, here's what happened at the interview, present it to council, and council will say, well, Dave, what did you think? I know you can't speak for the council, but what did you think? I did, what did you think? And that's fine.
Yeah. The council probably has too much on its plate-
Yeah.
-to participate in interviews. They're asking us to do this, and so we can give them that choice. We can say, here's our first pick, but as you just said, we'd like, we would like to know more. You're welcome to participate in an interview, or we can handle it.
Right. And we'll just give you a report. We can't meet as a group necessarily to recommend.
Yep.
Unless it's super urgent, then we'll call a 30 minute meeting one day and we'll decide. That's how I would present it.
And I, I would recommend that all of council participate, but that they should probably select one or two council members to participate with us. I think you get too big of a group in these things and it gets unwieldy.
So all we need to do is turn this into an official resolution, have an official vote, and we can move on.
So wait, are we interviewing them or not?
We recommend somebody.
The motion is to, is that we recommend that the planning commission, with some council participation if they would like, interview Simone Collins and Dirk and Edson, you know, in the final step of making a selection for the design team to do the town square. Is that right?
Part two. Part one is, we have to, if the planning commission had to make a decision based on the evidence we have today, we would recommend Simone Collins. However, the planning commission feels, I cannot make this motion, folks.
We also made it three times.
However, the planning commission feels that a interview, the two top candidates would be appropriate to answer questions that we've raised, which the proposal is not answered.
Correct.
And that we would propose to council that we, some members of the planning commission, interview those candidates between now and council meeting, invite one or two council members to join if they'd like, and that the planning commission members who do that will make a report to council of what they learned from the interviews.
So, when would the interviews be?
You guys have to stay.
But they would be before their council?
Yeah.
So, it has to be in the next week?
Yep.
Well, my experience is, when a prospective client calls and says, we need to get you in for an interview, they'll come in whatever we ask them to.
Todd, may I just say one thing?
The chair recognizes council member Ira Winston. Good evening.
Right, so there's an open question about whether that interview has to be done publicly and advertised. I don't know the answer.
That's right. We would just have to work that out with the staff.
Can't we just go off to the IHOP and have a couple of eggs over easy?
That's really, that's interesting. That's an interesting topic.
I think, I think, I think the question, council members, the obvious one to ask, but we can't solve that tonight, so then we'd have to rely on the borough manager and the solicitor to navigate that. And I'm not sure we can.
I mean, certainly, the borough has made many, many contracts for professional services without it being a public process, I assume.
Due process or deliberate process item. I mean, I haven't done consulting for more than 10 years, but I did a dozen project proposals, you know, to government agencies, and none of the, none of the interviews were ever public.
Again, I don't think we can resolve this tonight.
Yep.
We will have to confer with the borough manager and the solicitor, and then you guys will have to apply the best course.
So, do you have enough to articulate a recommendation, Todd, or do you want one of us to?
I think someone should make a motion and second it, who's not me. And I would ask, Adam, do you have enough to write this down as a resolution?
Well, what I have down is that if the planning commission were to recommend a consultant based on the written proposals, it would recommend Simone Collins, Inc. However, the planning commission recommends to interview Simone Collins and Dirk and Edson before making a final recommendation to council. Further, you know, I don't know if we also include, the planning commission also recommends unboarding the consultant to attend the final public workshop.
Adam, the last half of what you said was hard to hear. Could you say it again, please?
Like I'm shouting?
No, there was some scraping noise going on. Your voice is like, you're using such a good outside voice. It's great. But there was some scraping and static going on.
It sounded like you might have touched your microphone, Adam, so just.
All right. So, if the planning commission were to recommend a consultant based on the written proposals, they would recommend Simone Collins, Inc. However, the planning commission recommends to interview Simone Collins and Dirk and Edson before making a final recommendation to council. The planning commission further recommends that the design consultant be retained and attend the public workshop.
Great.
On the 29th?
25th.
Good evening. What day is it?
25th.
25th.
May 26th?
May 20th.
May 25th.
Yeah. One little tweak, Adam. If there are interviews, the planning commission will not formally make a different recommendation because we are not going to meet to do that. So, it would be, there should be interviews conducted before council makes its decision. So, there'll be interviews. The people at the interview will give council a report. It won't be a formal recommendation. It will just be, here's what we observed, here's what we think. But it will not be a formal planning commission recommendation because we will not be able to meet as a group to do that.
We'll give them a tape.
Tape.
Give them a CD to watch them.
Give them a video.
Well, actually, I was going to ask about that. Could this be a Zoom interview, or do you really think it needs to be in person?
Can you see the whites of their eyes through this?
Well, it's gone all the time.
Did you get that last word in the recommendation?
Uh, yeah, I'm making.
Okay.
So. Hang on, one second.
Okay.
So, I'm trying to see if this could perhaps be worded a little bit better. So, if the planning commission were to recommend a consultant based on the written proposals, it would recommend Simone Collins, Inc. However, the planning commission recommends to interview Simone Collins and Dirk and Edson and transmit written notes to council before council makes a final decision. The planning commission also recommends that the design consultant be retained in order to attend the public workshop scheduled for May 29th.
25th.
25th. I spoke wrongly.
May 25th.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, so.
Somebody want to make, move that and second it and vote?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Was it moved?
I moved it. I'm three seconds. He said.
Okay, all in favor of that resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm staying. I am staying. Okay, folks. All right. It's going to be perfect.
At least. It's not better.
So, we're moving along.
But we need a date.
Do we, you know, it's kind of, what's the next step? Is the next step now to reach out to the two firms with a date, or is that putting the carpet?
Isn't the next step that council meets and decides whether they want to?
The next step is I write this off as a note to council. If council has a workshop on Thursday, then council decides what to do.
Moving on.
I believe that would be correct, right? Ira, we'll submit a report of this resolution. Council will consider it and determine how council would like to proceed.
Correct. I'm also speaking with the borough manager tomorrow, so I'll just update her on this. So, she can be, she has to speak to the solicitor. She can do that in advance.
Okay, thank you, Ira. Thank you very much. That'll speed things along. Okay, so let's move on then. Zoning amendments. We have two zoning amendments to discuss. The First Amendment is the infill zoning ordinance, which we've been talking about probably for about nine months. You probably know that the final draft was presented to council, and council has voted to advertise that draft. Montgomery County Planning Commission has commented on that draft. Chloe, would you care to summarize your comments on that, on that advertised ordinance?
Certainly. We read the ordinance. My colleagues basically had no comments other than that it was a little confusing, but that they understood, you know, what the goals were, and that it's included in Narburg Borough's stated planning objectives and goals in the comprehensive plan. So, that's it.
Okay. So, it is our duty to make a recommendation to council. This phase of the review process as to whether we believe council should vote to approve that ordinance or not. And so, I'll entertain a discussion or a motion at this point. A formality, I hope. Any further discussion or, I mean, as it's been advertised, we're really not here to edit it any further.
So, it's been advertised, but we need to recommend its approval.
That's correct.
So, I recommend, I move that we recommend council approve this ordinance.
As advertised.
As advertised.
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion? We recall we went through this last month to try to parent out all the kinks before it got advertised, so hopefully there's no issue. Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Adam, are you in support of that motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so it is, the recommendation to councils is to approve the ordinance by vote of 7 to 0. Okay. So, the last item on the formal agenda before public comment, and we also have Zoe's, excuse me, Chloe's request to walk through some diagrams with us, is a new round of zoning amendments. Let me see where these come from. The background on this is that the borough manager approached me and asked if it would be possible to the planning commission to consider some technical amendments to the zoning code, trying not to deal with policy issues for the most part, and just clean up things that we've sort of been keeping track of that need to be cleaned up. No list, to be honest with you, comes without policy issues embedded in it. But the hope is that there are a couple of things that we can address quickly. So, those are summarized in the notes I sent to you by email. This list of potential things to address, most of them come from our own plan reviews and glitches therein. Others come to us from suggestions by the zoning officer, by the solicitor, by the borough staff as to things that they would like to see fixed. Some of these things, I can't even remember what the provenance of them is. They're just on a list that I've been keeping in my computer. So, what I'd like to do is, I guess what I'd like to do is kind of review them all very quickly with you to tell you what's here, and then we can decide how we'd like to proceed. If there's certain ones we feel we'd like to talk about or are easy to deal with, or things we feel, you know, that's not a quick fix. You need to talk about that. So, the first zoning fix has to do with accessory dwelling units. A question came up. I'm not sure where. It's one of those what-if questions, and what if an accessory dwelling unit also had a low-impact home office use or that you're allowed to have in a residence? Would they be allowed to have extra square feet? Could that area be, is that area included in the square footage of the ADU? We did not refer to that in the calculation of the square footage of the ADU. So, like, I decide I'm going to live in an ADU. I want to have my office there. Can I say, well, you know, 200 square feet of that is my office. It's not an ADU, so I get 1,000 square feet instead of the area?
No.
Okay, so I actually proposed a fix there that we just explicitly exclude or include areas dedicated to low-impact businesses in the calculation of an ADU. So, if you're all comfortable with that, we can just recommend that be amended.
Sorry, is that defined in your ordinance, the low impact?
I'd have to check, but I believe it, I know it's referred to. If someone has the zoning code handy.
It's in the use chart, Table 4, maybe?
Could you repeat the question?
Is low-impact business defined in the zoning code anywhere?
Yeah, it's at the end of the, it has like U.S. Public Standards. Let me find the section for you. There's seven or eight points that they need to find, but it's based on the activities that go on there and not in it.
Okay.
Section is 304. That just describes what a home-based business is, but again, it's only based on the type of activity that's going on there.
It's a no-impact home business, actually, right, Kevin? So, we should change that language to no-impact home business.
Correct.
No-impact home-based business.
That's smart.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay. Kevin, do you have any concerns about us recommending that change? Do you see any issues with that? Essentially, that if there is space in an ADU dedicated to a no-impact home-based business, that that would be included in the floor, in the floor area count of the ADU, of the 800 square feet total and 600 square foot ground floor? Do you have any concerns about us recommending that?
So, the ADU would be 800 square feet, and you're saying to throw a no-impact home-based business within that 800 square feet, correct?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. I wouldn't use the verb throw, but.
The only, the only issue I see with that is that one of the requirements for the no-impact home-based business is that this doesn't take up more than 25% of the habitable floor area. It does say principal building, though.
Well, it says the business activities shall be conducted within the principal or accessory building.
Right.
So, it could be in an accessory building, so it could be in an ADU. It may not occupy more than 25% of the habitable floor area of the principal building. So, we could also say it may not occupy more than 25% of the habitable floor area of the principal building or the accessory building, and also say the square footage has to be included in the count.
It's unpleasurable.
Much of it, much of it is unpleasurable, but.
We're talking about a kitchen table. How could there's a kitchen table?
So, wait a minute. So, up to this point, no-impact home business could be conducted in a non-ADU accessory building?
Apparently, yes.
And that can be any size, right?
Up to half the size of the.
Now, we're only, so now we're saying that only within the wall, the bounds of an ADU can a non-impact home business not take space as an expansion of that floor space. But a different accessory building is fine to have no-impact home business going on regardless of the floor space. Is that right?
If you want to have a little compound, yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, well, okay. So, if somebody wanted to dedicate an accessory building to his or her home-based business, they should not call it an ADU. They should call it just an accessory building.
Right.
Then it wouldn't be subject.
Right. But remember, an ADU is lived in by someone else.
Yeah.
Besides the person who owns the house.
Right. But that would be, what you described would be a mixed use on your property. You couldn't do that.
We allow no, we allow no-impact home businesses.
But a dedicated building to the business use?
An accessory building, yes.
Well, a shed.
That's garage, yeah.
David's allowed.
No, but I'm talking about a new.
For use by someone other than the resident of the property?
It's a home-based business, so.
So, if you built like an art studio in your backyard, you wanted to rent it out to an artist or something like that?
Business or commercial activity, minister, are conducted as accessory use that is clearly secondary to the use as a residential dwelling, so it's.
But it's for the, for the use, by the. But it's for the, for the use, by the resident, the principal resident of the property?
Correct, that's what accessory means.
That's the key.
Yes, because it's accessory.
So, you can't rent it out to...
So, it can't be somebody renting it from you for use as an art studio or whatever? It's got to be you using it.
He said yes.
Yes.
Yes, so now, you want to rent out your ADU.
Same.
If someone wants to have a home-based business in the ADU, it can only be up to 25% of the space of the ADU, and you do not get extra square footage for your ADU to have your home-based business. That's the clarif...
No extra space.
Yes.
The issue I see here, though, is that the employee, no employees other than family members residing in the dwelling, so you're calling the dwelling the accessory dwelling or the principal dwelling?
Well, in case of ADU, it would be the accessory dwelling.
It should go either way, Kevin.
Both ways.
Both ways.
Well, then, in that case, if you had the principal family A and the accessory structure with family B, have no-impact home-based business there, if it was related to the family members of the principal building?
Could the family, could family B have a no-impact home-based business in the ADU?
If you're, yeah, if you're saying that the term dwelling there at the end of the sentence applies to the accessory dwelling and not the main dwelling, all the other requirements refer to dwelling as the principal, then...
Right.
If you want to change that or specify that, it could be a dwelling of either the principal or ADU.
Okay, so you're saying that might need to be cleaned up, but what, I think the spirit of what I'm trying to suggest is if someone is an occupant of an ADU, by definition, that's a different entity from the occupant of the primary house, right? It's the least, or it's a family member. And so, the person who is the resident of the ADU can also have a no-impact home business. However, they cannot get extra square footage for their ADU. That's what we're trying to say.
Yes, I think so.
Because if someone is living in an ADU legally, why can't they be a graphic designer and have a business register, or an architect? Well, okay, no architects, we put an exception in.
We have it up.
They're too opinionated. And they all went to Penn.
Well, yeah, to make matters work, my t-shirt won't be with stainless.
Okay. All right, I think we get the gist of it, and we can work on the wording. The second topic, I want to try and move briskly, is historic district, which is an issue we experienced with Price House. I don't think we're going to solve this tonight, but I want to put it on the table for people to think about, is, right currently, certificate of appropriateness is, I copied the language in here, only applies to alterations that are visible from a public way and located within the first or second lot layer, right? So, if there's part of a historic building, like the Price House, which is in the third lot layer...
It's not in the third lot layer.
The part that they were trying to make an option.
I'm not saying...
Price House itself is not in the third lot.
Right.
You're referencing the part they wanted to make.
I'm saying if there is a portion of a house like that that is in the third lot layer, is there some way we would like to consider extending protection to that? And I don't think we're going to be able to answer that tonight, it's very complicated.
Yeah.
It might require more than we think.
The question that's written in your document isn't different from the new just stated, what if historic resource extends from the second to the third, well, it depends on how you interpret it, but let's say a part of, a whole extension to the building is partially in the second lot layer and partially in the third lot layer because of the way it's attached to the principal part of the building. And this comes up, a similar question came up, and Kevin and I had a poem back and forth about this, with garages on corner lots that are partially in the first lot layer and partially in the third lot layer because of the way the lot layers are defined, and whether those should be considered contributing resources or not because they're not clearly in the first lot layer or the third lot layer. So, there are some questions there.
Okay, well, we can consider that, but this question is precipitated by grand buildings that are so big, they're in the second and third lot layer, can someone just come and chop the third lot layer off?
Yeah, to me, there's a big difference between talking about a garage and talking about part of the primary structure.
Yeah, definitely.
So, I don't want to dwell on this because we're not going to resolve it tonight, but this is something either we or the HARM should take up. I do want to ask Kevin since it's come up, I'm hopeful that the demolition we're seeing at 500 North Eble was permitted before the historic district ordinance was passed. Do you know the backstory there?
Yeah, so what had happened was, they'd come in for a zoning permit, conditions well before the ordinance was passed. So, they pulled the demolition, it wasn't a demolition permit, it was a zoning permit, and existing building had was like a deck on the side yard closer to Sabine. And we went back and forth with John Walco that, I'm sure demolition was inherently included as part of the demolition, as part of the zoning and new construction permit or addition, whatever you want to call that, but before the historic was approved, and yes, it would have needed to go through historic, it would be appropriateness, and most likely, I assume, be permitted.
You say it would not be permitted?
It would have to be permitted by right, I mean, you'd have to go for a certificate of appropriateness, then through the HARM, through council.
So, Kevin, you said they, you're saying they initially came to you with proposal for just alterations to the building, and they said...
No, the whole, the whole side addition and addition going upward, I don't know if we want to call it new construction because they left a majority or a portion of the building there, so we'll call it slash new construction. They came in with that to propose the three-story structure, demolition permit as like a side permit, but by getting the zoning permit granted, they inherently included the demolition permit, and that was confirmed with John Walco.
But it occurred before the historic district?
The zoning permit, the zoning permit did, yeah.
That's the key.
So, why is that still happening now?
Right.
Why is the porch remaining and held out by spitting?
This is similar to 506 Dudley Avenue, I don't recall the exact scenario, but I think it's leaving a non-conforming front setback, maybe, or being built over an existing, it's not really a porch anymore, it's enclosed.
Yeah.
Because it's habitable space, you can build up over it, whereas if that were a porch, like a projecting porch, you can't build it because porch is isolated from the front setback.
So, what that is, is a porch that at one time was enclosed.
Correct.
Originally, it was a, it was a porch, as was the one next door.
Correct.
Okay.
And it's the same reason why they're leaving that side wall there, is because of the existing non-conforming side yard.
Yeah.
Unfortunately...
We're gaming the... This occurred before the historic district ordinance was passed. I really, I really would like to move on.
Just one more question. Kevin?
We've spent all night if you want, okay, go ahead.
Do you know how many more of these are still in the pipeline?
None.
That are still... None, okay.
Okay, I'm sure.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Move on.
All right. So, the next item is mixed-use buildings, and this is inspired by 714 Montgomery, where we learned that the zoning code is not written precisely enough and that vertical mixing is allowed but not required. So, sensing the planning commission would prefer mixed-use buildings to require vertical mixing, there's a couple of proposals here for amending the code. Definition of a mixed-use building in the definition section, instead of saying intended to provide a vertical mix, could say that includes a vertical mix. The description of a mixed-use building in the building type section 502 would say, rather than a multiple-story building that allows for vertical mixing of uses, would say within which a vertical mixing of uses is required. Furthermore, clarifying that the selected uses shall conform to those indicated in table 1 by right uses as allowable in a mixed-use building, because remember the questions of what a use actually was, that we had with the applicant? So, this would clarify that the uses are those which are defined in table 1, for lack of clarity. And also, for the purpose of determining what uses are allowed in a mixed-use building, parking shall not be considered. Do you remember when the applicant said the ground floor was commercial because there was parking for the commercial use there? Yeah, so I don't think we would want to, do you remember that? And I asked him what on the ground floor is not residential, he said, well, there's commercial there because there's parking for the commercial units.
So, do you want to clarify that it has to be a principal use and not an accessory use?
Do we have principal use defined?
Also...
Do you use the terms?
Principal use is the main use of a later structure, distinguish it from accessory use.
That's something that seemed like it was coming up, that they were saying, oh, there's going to be a lobby, there's going to be parking, there's going to be a gym for the residents, and those all seem to me like accessory uses to the residential use rather than a different use themselves.
Right. Okay. I did also add, we have, in the 5A district, we have a limit on the size of lobbies. We permit, we specifically allow for lobbies, but we say that the maximum width of a vast build lobby should be 12 feet in the 5A district, so I'm also proposing we extend that to the 5B district, so that if there's a mixed-use building, if it's a 12-foot lobby, that's fine, you need to get upstairs, but you don't have a 100-foot lobby with a garage.
Can I ask what a vertical mix is?
A vertical mixing of uses?
Yeah. Does that mean that there's a whole, there's a main use on one floor and then a main use on another floor?
Primary, primaries.
Primary use on one floor and then the other floor is a different primary use?
Right, as defined in the code. You can't say, I have an accountant on the first floor and a budget analyst on the second floor, that's not mixed use. And a dermatologist on the first floor, a urologist on the second floor, that's not mixed use.
So, you were saying parking is not going to be part of this calculation?
Not a calculation.
Sorry, it's not?
It's not a calculation, it's just a determination that a building is mixed use.
And this won't impact the shared parking situations you have?
No, I'm simply saying you cannot argue that parking makes a mixed-use building because the parking is...
It's an accessory, okay, yeah.
You can't like say, oh, I have a mixed-use building by putting parking on the first floor because it's serving a commercial use, so I got commercial on my first floor. No, you have to actually have commercial space, not parking or commercial space. So, I don't even want to make a crazy example.
It sounds good.
Okay. All right, well, you'll see this again, but I'm just trying to get it. Number four is another thorny one, has to do with single-family houses and detached houses. Remember, the fuzziness of the language that allowed for the complications at 3 Elmwood, where they figured out they could come up with a two-family house that was a detached house. So, what I'm going to, so, we've talked a lot about this, but I think the intent of the code is to allow for an existing single-family house to be expanded to have another dwelling in it.
Multiple units.
Or unfortunately, up to four multiple units, but that...
Still five.
By adding four units. Unfortunately, there's a quirk in the definition that says, one of the definitions that says, one of these houses is designed for one or two houses, and that's how the applicant at 3 Elmwood was able to propose these odd houses with two units, because our definition said designed for one or two families. So, what I've tried to do here is clarify the language that detached house is a building that's built to have one dwelling, it's built to have one dwelling. That if you want to have more than one dwelling, it has to be a pre-existing house that's converted through a special exception, which is the process that we have. We allow, so currently, we allow detached house to have units added to it through a special exception, right? The problem in our code is that a detached house is defined as a building with one or two units in it. So, what I'm trying to do is say, no, a detached house just has one unit in it. And if you want to have an extra unit, you have to get a special exception to add that unit.
Unless a multi-family house is allowed.
Unless a multi-family house is allowed, then you can just convert it to a multi-family house.
I'm not sure I'd be comfortable with that, I mean, I like, I like that we don't have single-family house in Narburg, you know, that's, and it's, you know, single-family zoning is less popular among the progressive thinking people these days, you know?
I don't think it's that, I think it's allowing for a house to have more than one unit, but through, the problem we have in our code is, you can build a house with two units in it from the get-go as a detached house, right?
Why is that a problem?
Well, you want, oh, think about 3 Elmwood, they could have characterized that as a multi-family house, and it would have been fine. I think what, the issue there was, to build a multi-family house, I think they would have needed to have, what is it, what was the issue, they would have needed to have more lot area than they had? And is that what happened to them? Like, why did they build a multi-family house? Multi is allowed in the 3B district, right? But they chose to build a detached house as opposed to a multi-family house. So, we're not, people can still build a building with more than one dwelling in it. They could also build, they could also, if you have a, if you have a detached house now, nothing would change, you can still add a unit to it through a special exception. The only difference is we're not, what we're saying is...
Use, special exception, by right use.
It's different from a variance, but that's the way it is now. The way it is now is if you have a detached house and you want to add a unit to it, you have to get a special exception to do it.
I understand, but what I guess I'm getting at is that, what Jim is saying is that many municipalities are no longer creating, they're doing away with zoning districts that restrict the lot to a single-family house. That is, that is kind of a movement that's occurring in some places. It's clear that housing according to the rules is becoming a critical problem, and so...
What's that?
Having shortage is a critical problem. That seems like a different discussion, though. I'm not disagreeing with you.
Well, but, so, but, if I may continue for a moment, 3 Elmwood, we're just talking about the site plan that we reviewed a while ago, correct? That's what you're referring to? Where the riparian corridor was the main issue, one of the, one of the key issues as well as the driveway lots, and there were many site plan issues with 3 Elmwood, and I'm worried that, I'm not sure that, that zoning remedy being discussed would not have cured the problems with 3 Elmwood, and they could perhaps have designed the homes as gigantic single-family homes, and it would have retained all the same site planning problems with even fewer dwelling units. So...
Well, they wouldn't have had as much parking if they only had single-family homes. They would only have had to have half as much parking.
Well, yeah, there's a question of how much parking is required for the number of units, yes, but there's no, I believe there's a parking maximum, is there?
There's not, no.
It seems like there's a loophole, sorry, Adam, let me... Try again.
No, go ahead, Chloe.
It seems like there's a loophole, you have this definition of a multi-family house, which is a detached house type with two to five dwelling units within the structure, but there's nothing to prevent someone from calling some, a building... calling some, a building, there's, the distinction between a detached house and a multi-family house isn't clear enough such that they have, they can sort of try to get around and choose which site planning standards or which building type are easier for them to meet. So I think Todd's just trying to clarify that so that they can't sort of call their project something that's...
Yeah, sorry, I didn't interrupt you.
No, it's okay. I'm done.
To me, the issue, if you're talking about the site planning standard, that isn't about the unit count, that's about site planning, which is about the setbacks, the massing, and so on, the form-based code, not the unit count. What does it matter how many units are in a building with the setback? Like, that doesn't, you know, doesn't, there's not really a causal relationship there.
Okay. So I'm going to posit this, though. Even if it were the consensus here that a detached house could include two dwellings from the get-go, we would still need to clean up these definitions. So, okay, so embedded in this is a policy assumption. My assumption is the policy is, I think the intent of the code was, if you read it, a detached house is a one-family dwelling, a single-family dwelling. But there's this little loophole that allows you to make it a two-family dwelling because of the way this one definition is written. So what I'm trying to do is sort of clear this up to be consistent with the way the code is written. Now, if you all feel that we shouldn't have single-family houses anymore at all, then we still need to amend the code to achieve that, because the code will not allow what you're saying. So one way or the other, the code is too, there's imprecise language in here, one way or the other, it needs to be repaired. So I'll take the point that maybe this is a policy issue now and not just a clean cleanup, because you don't agree with the policy that is actually in our zoning code right now. So I think we'll have to table that. And so we'll have a confusing code. The next issue is site planning, Table 4, which is, there's some odd errors. I believe this came from, Kevin, did this come from you, the clarification of apartment buildings, multi-family use types, and how they are incorporated in Table 4?
Yeah, so this, that's actually originally started from the 714 Montgomery property, where the 5B district gives you a minimum lot size for an apartment building of 4,000 square, but the, that use isn't even permitted, so why have a minimum lot size? And then on the, I think it was multi-family house, I think it is a permitted use in the 5B district, but there's no minimum in Table 4.
Well, Kevin, I think in that regard, multi-family use is allowed in the 5B district through an apart, through a mixed-use building type, but a multi-family house is not allowed. So there's a distinction between a multi-family use and a multi-family house. Does that, does that make sense to you?
I don't think that was in, I'm not sure, I'd have to go back and check.
But I do think you're right. Since we don't allow apartment buildings in the 5B district right now, we shouldn't have site planning tables saying there's a standard for apartment buildings, because that creates confusion. So I would say those points are right, but we might need to look, so I guess the question for the planning commission is, it's Kevin's assessment that Table 4 and the standards therein is not completely consistent with the building types that are allowed in the different zones. And he would like Table 4 to be consistent with what building types are actually allowed. So if apartment buildings are not allowed in the 5B zone, there should not be a standard for apartment buildings in the 5B zone.
Absolutely.
So can we all agree that we should clean this up in the way that Kevin is suggesting?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So Kevin, I think we can clean it up the way you're suggesting, we just need to verify that it's all correct, okay?
I'll check that.
Okay. The next one is, and this comes from 714 Montgomery as well, we do not have definitions of a corner lot, a rear lot line, or a side lot line. We searched and couldn't find them, which meant there was ambiguity in how that lot was viewed. So I proposed, I believe, unless these definitions are organized in a funny way, I propose a definition for corner lot, which is a lot that's located at the intersection of two streets and has lot lines bordering each of those streets. One of the lot lines shall be designated a primary frontage and one of the lot lines shall be designated a secondary. I guess they are designated by the address of the lot.
Well, you know, there are some places around town where there are, where that designation has been achieved by the, by the property owner.
I think elsewhere, we say in the code that the zoning officer or council has the ability to determine which...
That's much better.
That is not in the definition.
That's where the definition should be.
There's a definition of a rear lot line, which we do not have, suggested that the definition be the lot line, that's most nearly opposite the primary frontage. A rear lot line may intersect a side lot line or a secondary frontage line. So that means in 714 Montgomery, they can't say we have a rear lot line, this is, we have a, right?
They have like a five-sided lot, though.
And every lot shall have a rear lot line.
Would they get to pick which one of those angled lines is their rear lot?
Well, it's the lot line that's most nearly opposite the primary frontage.
So it'd be just geometrically whichever is most parallel?
I worry that, are we, are we creating more non-conformities for our existing town by all of this, or not?
So, I don't know. I mean, most of our lots are rectangular.
Yeah, we tell you what, very good number.
I think that for 714, the critical definition of its rear lot line is that it is directly, it's next to a neighborhood that has a different zoning. I think that's the critical part of its rear lot line, not its parallelness to a primary or anything like that. You know, it does have five, you know, defining boundaries, I would say, to understand rear and primary as its, in its zoning context, not as a geometry.
Well, I see, I think that would be, I think you're right, I thought about that. I think it would be definitely, it would be a problem to bake that into the definition of a rear lot line. But I think to handle that situation, something we might consider is in the 5B district, we could say the setback, any lot line that borders an adjacent residential district should have 25-foot setback, whether it's a side lot line or a rear lot line or whatever. That would avoid the whole problem that we have there.
Oh, but, I'm sorry, a 25-foot setback from what?
From the property line that's adjacent to adjoining zoning district.
I just worry that we're really shooting ourselves in the foot here without thinking, like, I think we should really check the impact of those kinds of changes on the whole...
Adam, let me just, I'm sorry, we're not trying to rewrite the intent of the code. We're trying to make the code say what we've always intended.
I think that it feels a lot like we're reacting to individual development proposals in weird situations, that we're, by making the changes, we risk actually messing up more regular lots for future development, potentially.
The current setback of a rear lot line in the 5B district is 25 feet.
At that meeting, Todd, you were arguing that the side lot on Meeting House, the lot line parallel, I'm sorry, the lot line perpendicular to Meeting House Lane, which does separate two zoning districts, a residential district and the mixed-use district, right? That, you wanted to argue that was the rear lot line because it was the most distant from Montgomery Avenue. That was the argument that I believe you were making, and we will end up, and then now we're talking about a buffer also between the two zoning districts. And you're going to end up with no lot left if you, if you have all these buffers, potentially. And then I just worry that other lots might have even, you know, you end up with leftover space that doesn't make any sense.
That's, but see, that's the way the code is written now. Code is written now.
I don't, I don't feel like I have enough expertise around the details of the zoning code, but the form-based code element of it and the whole, the whole intent, like, I don't, I don't actually personally think that, that calling that lot line, for example, a rear lot line is entirely, I understand what you're trying to accomplish in some ways, but if the parcel were addressed as a Meeting House Lane parcel, you know, it becomes very clear, right? It's a side lot lot. It's the presence of the historic resource that, on this weird configuration lot, that is driving this sort of definitional problem, not so much the definitions themselves. I mean, maybe you think I'm, maybe it's a...
I'm proceeding from the experience of when we wrote the code. One of the decisions we made, the only place we have such a deep rear yard setback is in the 5B district. And that's because we wanted to allow for a more intense use along Montgomery Avenue, but we also did not want that intense use to be close to the adjoining residential district. That was the planning goal. That's, and that was one of the things that I remember very vividly, was, was an unusual aspect. And we all recognized at the time, yeah, there are lots of tiny little lots in some blocks of Montgomery Avenue where that could be a problem. But we felt that that was, that was of overriding importance to make sure that residential neighborhoods were buffered from any intense development that was built along Montgomery Avenue. And so...
I mean, I think the other thing is that property could be subdivided.
It could be.
And the owner, the property owner has chosen instead to develop it, and I think that very aspect of it, it makes it a Montgomery Avenue address, and therefore separating it from the residential neighborhood is critical. If you wanted to subdivide it, you could put a house next to the house that's on Meeting House.
Todd, we recommended that...
Go ahead.
Sorry, we recommended that the owner come back and work with the planning commission on a variance or, you know, an alternate process. But to address those issues, but the sort of, you codify it as it must be this, this 25-foot buffer, that's like an entire house lot worth of land, and houses themselves are right next to each other. So I, I think, I just am a little concerned.
Let's table this one.
I just want to say, the objective of this exercise is to clarify language to achieve the goals that are already in the zoning code. You may not agree with the goals that are in the zoning code, but the exercise is to make sure that the goals that are in the code now are achieved. This code was sold to people who live next to Montgomery Avenue, that there would be a buffer between their homes and what's developed in Montgomery Avenue.
Right.
That's what they expect. Not someone to come in later and say, "Well, sorry, we'd like to have more intense development there next to your house, five feet away." It's not what they, you know, expected when this code was passed. Now, if we want to change that, it's a bigger debate, about whether or not that was an appropriate planning goal to be taken.
Yeah, I'm not thinking about this one, I'm not, like, my question was, I'd like to see this mapped on all of the parcels, not just Montgomery Avenue, because I'm concerned what might happen, you know, how we feel, but I'm a little worried that we might be having unintended consequences.
Can you could add a comment about adjacent zoning districts?
Right now...
Because that is the big factor here, I think, is that they're two different zoning types.
In 714 is exactly the example that we were trying to, I mean, in the last meeting, the guy was talking about needing a fourth floor.
Right. Right. So I think it's a zoning district issue and that that would be included.
Right now, the proposal is to add three definitions, because we do not have a definition of a corner lot, a rear lot line, or a side lot line. We desperately need these definitions, because the code doesn't work if we don't define these things.
I think that's fine.
So the issue of the setback from the 3B is actually, though Jen raised it, and I proposed an idea, it's not actually what we're talking about tonight. Tonight is to have definitions for the kinds of lot, we don't have a definition of a corner lot, it's used all over the zoning code, we need to define it. We don't have a, we don't have a definition of a rear yard or a side yard, we have a generic definition of a yard, and I really feel we need to define them, so...
Todd, can I just...
And, and yes, every definition is going to create some non-conformities, but right now, we have a code that we can't actually use because we don't define certain terms. So, yeah.
Does a corner need to be defined as, in its, say, on a three-sided lot, on a four-sided lot, on a five-sided side of the lot, or six plus? A corner is this. Because, you know, typically, we think of corner as a corner on a block, which is pretty obvious, but I think we do have more complicated definitions of corners that, that call the question of primary into, you know?
Well, I think what, 25 minutes ago, Todd, due his definition of corner sums it up pretty well. It's the intersection of two streets.
I just wrote a definition for corner lot for the saldo, and I use the term contiguous frontage on two intersection streets, which might help clarify it a little bit because we couldn't have to, have, like, that actually, 714 Montgomery has frontage on two streets, and those two streets do intersect with each other.
This is a lot that was located at the intersection.
At the intersection, okay.
So this lot is not a corner lot?
No, this lot would not be a corner lot.
I think you might want to say something about being visible from a public right away, because that's what's really critical here, too, is what they're building.
The last analysis, that's what counts, is that it's visible from two streets.
Well, I was going to delve into the corner of a corner lot.
Well, because it's on a corner, the fact that the one corner is cut out, it's still got two streets that are connected.
That can't, no, that can't be, that can't be, if you read the way corner lot is used in the zoning code, that, in the way, we even have a drawing of corner lots.
I mean, maybe that's more of a hard issue.
Yeah, I don't think that's really a...
714 is not a corner lot, the property next to it would be under that definition, but it's really more of a through lot because it's, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's corner, corner line is a rear lot.
That's the corner lot we just added with the ADUs.
Yeah, it's more nearly a through lot than a corner lot.
And there are a number of those on Montgomery, because they meet, streets meet Montgomery at an angle, so there are a lot of those three-sided lots.
Well, a corner lot does not necessarily mean it's a four-sided lot. It could be any side, any number of sides, but it's just a corner. I mean, we use corner lot in many, many cases in the zoning code, we just don't define it. It doesn't matter how many sides, as long as it has, every lot has to have three sides, right? I think we can agree, a lot doesn't have three sides. So every lot has to have three sides. And if two of those sides are next to two streets that intersect, it's at that intersection, it's a corner lot. Doesn't matter what happens to the rest of the side street.
So it doesn't matter what that angle is.
Doesn't matter the angle.
So the two property lines that form the corner lot could possibly be the front line and the rear line, you're saying?
I'm not saying that.
Well, that stuff's going to happen, you know? Well, what happens with those three, three-sided lots?
If they want that, they can get a variance. We don't need to solve every problem. If someone has a highly unusual situation where they want to have a rear lot line next to a front lot line, so that's why we define a rear lot line. A rear lot line is defined as the line that's most nearly opposite the primary frontage. A rear lot line may intersect a side lot line or a secondary frontage.
It seems like the only place that's really ambiguous is triangular lots.
I mean, we're never going to solve every problem, but the idea is to get enough of a definition down, so in that unusual case, where somebody has a corner lot and they want the front next to the rear, they can go for a variance, because...
But a triangular lot would have to go for a variance, right? I don't understand how this, can you just explain how it works on a triangular lot?
There's no place, there's no place where it's defined that a lot that has four sides. There's no place where it's defined that a lot that have four sides.
Does a triangular lot have a rear lot line?
You know, if the rear lot line in this definition would be a lot line that's most nearly opposite the primary frontage. If there is no rear lot line opposite the primary frontage, then I suppose that that would be something that someone would have to get a variance for. I don't have one of them. Problem is right now, by not defining it, there's nothing people can, we can either hold them to anything, nor do they have to seek a variance if they have an unusual circumstance.
So we're in no man's land.
Right.
Definitions are good, even though they're hard.
Yeah.
But in the case of interpreting code.
What's that?
Even in the case of interpreting code, this body of decision-making can clarify primary and rear and side. That is within the power planning commission to do that? Or it can be contested ad nauseam?
If there's ambiguity, the zoning officer can make determinations. But if there's too much ambiguity, the applicant can simply say, that isn't defined. I don't need to have a rear lot because rear lot's not defined. I don't need to have one. Any applicant can come in right now and say, I don't have a rear lot. Tell me what definition a rear lot is. All my lots are side lots. What? And they win. What's that?
Not any applicant could credibly make that claim. The rear, you know, it's not a side lot, it's not a side lot line, it's not a frontage. It's, there's nothing else that can be but the rear lot line, right?
They don't define a side lot line, we don't define a rear lot. None of it's defined, only the frontage is defined.
Yeah, well, we should define the side lot line at a minimum. I think, maybe it's fine. I mean, I just, I think it seems fine. We just need to make sure that it's.
Well, we're not going to solve tonight, but please do read these notes over. The next one is way too complicated, but it's the other issue of 714 reasons, which is the frontage and frontage lines. Again, this is not a matter of rethinking what the code is about. It's simply observing, the code is not written precisely. It needs to be written precisely to achieve what we want. As with these definitions, as with everything else. So I'm just going to ask you all to look at these changes that are proposed to see if these feel to you like they are tightening up the language of the code. But it's too much to take on at this point. But continuing on, there are a couple miscellaneous recommendations. One of the recommendations that came from the Borough Office was to change the maximum number of dwellings in the multifamily house from five to three. Kevin or Michelle, do you know where that came from, that recommendation?
It was.
Well, no, we made that already and council rejected it, but it's popped up again on this list of changes that Samantha gave me. Do either of you know who made that request?
This is the first time I'm saying this.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, let me skip that. There is a recommendation to encourage green building, which I think we have, without a more specific actionable idea. I think that came from the EAC. I'm not sure there's anything we can do with that right now, though. Define short-term rentals came up. Kevin, do you, Kevin or Michelle, do you know where that came from?
Nothing from me.
I don't.
We already, I thought we already did this.
Well, we define temporary logic, which is a dwelling rated, currently it's a dwelling rented or otherwise used by a family for no more than 30 days in one year.
I think this actually might be a result of the Airbnb issue.
Does that language need to be improved, Kevin, because of Airbnbs?
I'm not sure. I'm going to have to look at it. Like I said, sorry, Todd, I just saw this before the meeting, so.
I didn't, I got this from the Borough Office. I figured it was some consolidation. The last, the next two, I'm not sure there's anything really for us to do. One is John Waco has requested some amendments to the Wireless Facilities chapter. I feel like if there, we would just sort of be in the best position if we were responding to some concrete proposals, if you see some weaknesses in that chapter. Kevin, there was an issue about the chapter, the section on hedges and streets and street skips. Or maybe, I don't know Chloe, if you know anything about this, but I think the idea is that the section about that should be removed from the zoning code and put to the SALDO.
Well, so there is stuff in the draft SALDO related to vegetation in the planting district in the right of way. However, it would only apply at the time of land separation of land development. So you might want to have something, you do have a standalone streets and sidewalk ordinance, separate from zone and SALDO. But I think Kevin was working on revising something in there.
Were you talking about hedges encroaching on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Is that what this is about?
It's really, the code is.
Yeah, so this was all recently adopted, as this was saying. This just went in the new streets and sidewalks section. Basically the same language, the exclusion of edges not being able to go above four feet in height. So it did in the zoning code. In other words, like for property maintenance issues, I don't refer to zoning code where it's in sidewalk standards. I don't think it's necessary in the zoning code either.
So the suggestion from the Borough Office and staff is that this part of the zoning code should be removed because it's covered by other codes and it's not really a matter of zoning.
As long as it's covered.
No, Kevin just said it is. Solar panels is the next item. The EAC has raised some question about our solar panels, the way our roof rules and solar panel rules work. I know that we thought very hard about those rules when we drafted the code. What I've done is I've asked Jen, Jennifer, to see if she could do some research as to whether or not there are other standards that we might be asked to consider for solar panels. I don't want to debate this issue in theory. I'd rather have someone say, here's a standard for solar panels that may be more effective than the one we have now. Can we consider that? So Jennifer's agreed to look at that. The EAC raised that question. And then the last, the last question which John Waco raised is about tightening up the rules for off-premises signs in a way that will give us a stronger ability to manage billboards. My first question is, is there some problem here that we're not aware of? So I think that we, as with the, as with the active key wireless facilities, I would propose we invite the solicitor to give us a revision to the code that he thinks will.
And tell us what the problem is.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know that we can go for this. That would be my response to that. Okay.
A while back, we met with Kevin and there was a short list of concerns Kevin had. I think they had, you know, there was one about generators and equipment in the front yard. There was one about, I think it was like side ingress to basements in the right of way. Remember, do you remember that?
Yeah, one of the ones, a lot of other municipalities have above-ground mechanical equipment. We don't require setbacks from any front, side, rear yards. And actually, they proposed a propane tank in their front yard, which would have been issued by right. About screening, do we want to require vegetative or other screening for these types of equipments? They're just, the generator one is concerning specifically because obviously it makes noise. You could put it as far away from your house, but right next to Beaver's house, they'll hear it as the owner. So that was one of the issues.
There was one about pools right on the property line?
Yeah, so pools, that's a really tricky one. Pools you can technically put right up on the property line. Because it's not above grade, I can't call it a structure. So generally, pools need to be three foot setback from the side of rear lot lines, which is usually not an issue, but technically you don't have to set back a pool at all for many of the lot lines.
And then the last one I remember had to do with defining the facade line in the cases of engaged porches or porches that don't have foundation underneath them or, you know. There was that house on Dudley, I think was the prime example of that, that was taking advantage of our porch to redefine its front line setback.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if the projecting porch had a foundation of facade or livable space between it and the front facade, that's actually used in a lot of different larger municipalities, Pittsburgh, Philadelphia. I think similar type of language for that. We've only seen it try and get applied once, but I don't think, or is the other ones. I think the one you'd kind of mentioned briefly was like bill code lookout steps. Things like that that encroach into side yards, are they permissible? It's not part of a house, so they're technically below grade.
Oh, yeah.
Kevin, the first issue you raised about things like propane tanks, is that really a zoning issue or is that some other part of the code?
It's nowhere, you know, and it's in nowhere in Narbor's codes. And in two other municipalities we regulate, it's in the zoning code for buffering and screening. Is rooftop appliances, you know, right over the roof. Do you want to screen that from view or?
Yeah, I actually think that was in the list and somehow that I received and somehow I didn't get it on here. So Kevin, I think the way that it's easy for us to deal with these things is if there's a, if there's a, something that ought to be fixed, clarified, and, you know, it's because it's a gap or something we overlooked when we wrote the code, it's easy for us to kind of react to a real proposal, like propose to create, require a three-foot setback for pools or something like that. So if you, you have, those are the kinds of things I think that Samantha wants to roll into this ordinance. So if you have a list of little fixes like that that you've been keeping and you have like a way of saying like, well, you know, here's this issue, here's how I think the code should be amended, that would be the easiest way for us to deal with them. As I was saying with solicitor, if the solicitor's identified a problem with our cell towers or our billboards, I think we'd appreciate if the solicitor would say, I've identified this problem, I'd like to propose this way of amending the code. Would you guys care to review this before I send it off to council? That would be the easiest thing for us to do. So are there things on that list that you would want to send us some ideas about?
The ones we just verbally talked about, yeah, I don't mind some things, like from other municipalities.
Just cite the area of the code that you feel is deficient. I got this memo from the EAC that was criticizing the roof rules, but I couldn't find in the code the rule they were criticizing. And I get to throw my hands up. I don't know what you're talking about because I can't find this in the code. So if there's something that's deficient, if you could just like flag this section of the code is deficient, here's how I think it can be approved, that will be all we need, I think.
Okay, yeah, I think, I mean, personally, I think a section just screening and buffering, in like, I would call it like 714, create a new section there would cover everything. Mechanical, top equipment, generators, everything.
I can recirculate this memo from April of last year that had like five or six points on it.
That'd be great. I don't know why, yeah, I don't know why it wasn't in the list I got, so go ahead. Okay. All right, so I've been told, let's, let's close this topic. Before we go, let's see if we can find out about special meeting in June. I was told by Michelle Carroll, seemed to be a lot of availability on June 20th. However, June 20th is a borough holiday.
What? What a borough holiday is that?
It's Juneteenth. They.
For a meeting.
So the 20th is not, it's an official borough holiday, so we can't skip to a meeting. So of all the days that are on this chart, the only day that works for most people is the 15th. So I think two or three of you have waited. Can anyone else who hasn't waited tell me about your availability?
Yeah, that's good, that's good for me.
Yeah, right now I can't do it, but let's just see how everyone else is doing. We'll see what happens.
And the idea is that that June 15th date would be for the regular planning meeting.
For regular business.
Business and that the June 6th would be for the SALDO.
Yeah, or we'll still consider June 1st for the SALDO and June 6th for regular business.
For me, the 1st and the 6th are fine. The 15th is if, likely, I think, I don't know. But it's maybe less important. I mean, I need to be here for the SALDO thing. I have to miss.
Okay, does anyone else have a problem with the 15th?
Well, it's getting close to Labor Day for me.
Yes, that's for sure.
Although Labor Day is a little hard to predict.
I am talking about June, so if I'm missing the joke, I will feel like.
No, the joke is my daughter's going to have a.
Oh, I got it.
To live with her grandchild somewhere.
I wish you'd hurry up already.
The second year needs to come early.
All right.
It's imponderable. I cannot. Because it's any date.
There's no date.
You feel it's more likely that it will have to be the 1st, which is, it sounds to me, just because the middle of the month is too, 50.
It's if-year, who knows?
And the best day we have is a holiday, so there you go. Okay. Any other, Chloe, it's very late, it's like 3:00.
Yeah, no, I don't need to do anything now. I would be happy to just go through this at our, whatever special meeting was scheduled. If there's anyone who's really excited about cutting a half an hour on a Zoom call looking at future meetings, chatting, let me know. We can have a little sidebar conversation and bring it to the whole group.
Okay.
When we. If not, that's fine.
You'll send us a Zoom invite or something?
For what?
Like if you want to, if you want to talk about some of the sidewalk, I was going to go through issues with the sidewalk and the planting district with some things.
I thought you had something like.
Yeah, no, there's nothing scheduled. But if someone's particularly interested in that topic and wants to chat about it ahead of the next, you know, ahead of the full group meeting, we can do that. Just reach out.
Yeah, so.
That's you.
Pointing, if there's something that you're really concerned about in SALDO, just can't wait until June. This is your chance. Don't say you didn't have a chance. And I think we've emailed the links to the files two or three times though.
Right, and if you can't find anything or you have a question for me, just get in touch. Happy to chat, email is good. Or we can set up a time to Zoom.
All right. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Todd, can I ask you one question real quick? For the June 1st meeting, are you and the rest of the members okay with starting the meeting at 7:30 instead so Eric Johnson can join?
I would prefer it.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Still has to end at 9:30.
Yeah, so...
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, well, if you adjourn at 9:37, we are adjourned.